Sharon will be good. She's good.
I'll open the meeting for the board of selectmen Tuesday, August 2nd. I ask everyone to please rise before we begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone. We will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrant for 8 to 16 and a special warrant for 8 to 16.
I will make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? And then all in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the selectmen minutes for 4:29 16.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to acknowledge the minutes and reports to the EMS for July 16 and the cultural council for 3:7 and 6:6.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, volunteers are needed to serve on several town committees, including the advisory committee, local public access, conservation. A letter of interest should be submitted to the board of selectmen, 6th Central Street, Brookfield, Mass. 01506, or simply email selectmen@brookfieldma.us, or you can physically call this office and Karen will help you at 508-867-2930, extension 10. State Representative Donnie Bertheam will be holding office hours from 5 to 6 Tuesday, September 6th, at the town hall. Any other announcements? Okay, none? Anybody wish to address the board this evening?
I will. Would you like me to come to the table?
I think you're good there.
Hey, we met with the advisory board net last night, and we discussed the bridge, the Chapter 90 money.
Yeah.
And we'd like to see if you can use the Chapter 90 money. I know you owe some money on Mill Street and Webber Road, correct?
Yeah, we had that discussion at the last meeting.
Briefly.
We don't know where we're at with that.
Okay.
The payouts. Me, in a knee-jerk reaction to the email that I saw from this morning, is that we're only the second month into this fiscal year, and to physically drain all of Chapter 90, I think is detrimental to the town. So I think we have to assess, once we find a figure. In regards to that, we did have two engineers come out Thursday. Haven't got word back for that, but Herb has been working. If you've seen the emails, he's requesting more Jersey barriers. If we can put it into one lane, and then lights for both sides to the state, and he is being proactive.
I was down when he did call from here.
Dissection.
Okay, but getting back to the financial part of it again. We've got $167,000 that came in this year, and we have about $8,000 left from last year.
Time to see. Welcome.
So, my point is, I think spending that money right now, I don't know how much it's going to cost for the bridge, because you haven't had the engineers out there, I understand all that, but I think before you start hitting the stabilization, I think you should really consider taking that money out of Chapter 90, because that's what that money's for. And I know, behind the scenes, they're looking to buy another piece of equipment down the highway, and I think that can wait. I think this bridge is more important financially, rather than taking it out of stabilization.
It is, but at the same time, I don't want to put the town in a hole, two months into the fiscal year draining all of Chapter 90. So again...
Well, what else you got in mind for that Chapter 90 money, then?
Again, we have to find out how much we have, how much the project's going to cost, and then we'll evaluate it when we get to it.
Because I think it's glass with, I don't think the money's even certified yet.
That's correct.
It hasn't been certified.
And that was a discussion. We're spinning out of real estate over and over.
No, 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 no. We're just...
But it's the same exact conversation we had last week.
No, no, we're just talking about what the options we have. We also have $35,000 in the road reconstruction, we can use that as well.
Right.
Well, one, we don't know what we have, because we don't have it yet.
Well, it's going to be 167, if we want to...
Then 1300, so that's the one, the one side.
Yeah.
And then, again, it was Highway's recommendation to use those $35,000 dollars, but again, I think it's very premature to...
100%.
It's not premature, I'm just talking in advance before we do something. I'm not saying we're going to do it, I'm just putting it out there.
Just premature.
Rather, because you guys are talking stabilization, and we just had that discussion last night, that if we have that money there, we should use it for that bridge.
We got it last week as well, and nothing's changed in that week.
Okay, I'm just saying what we discussed, and we're just bringing our recommendation to you. Take it for what it's worth.
Anything else?
No, that's good for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that topic, though, I'm hopeful that the second engineer is, I mean, he was, he came prepared, or they came prepared. They had the drawings of the original bridge, had studied it, and the idea of supporting it north-south, steelwork to go north-south underneath the bridge, plan, my husband's agree with, and so I'm hopeful to see what he has to say.
Like we said last week, my desire is to fix it, instead of a temporary bridge. And we're in a good place.
Yes.
People still working every day.
Yep.
Anybody else who wants to address the board? Item number one, we do have interviews, one's at 5:30, but we do have questions, so that was circulated. Linda and Karen had put them together, I came in, made an edit, it was put out. What's that?
Joan had input.
Yeah, Joan had a little bit.
Well, she had one question that she had. I think the five questions are good. I'm not opposed to asking anything above and beyond these questions, if the need arises. Do you want, just one person asks five questions, or do you want to go one after another, or...
I would defer to Linda, she did the work.
Would you rather ask the questions?
I don't have a problem with that, and then, I mean, then both of you could, you know, chime in a little bit if you want.
So you can ask each question, everyone, and we might hit you back off those questions. My question to you, Linda, is, you were charged a few weeks ago to solicit information on references? Were you able to get references on...
References, no, I had asked, Carrie was bringing her references in, and I think Kathy was going to bring hers in also.
So based on that fact, I don't think we should make a decision tonight?
Oh, no, no, we'll just wait until we have, we'll look at our references.
After tonight, I think you should make the calls to the references.
Yes, okay, I will.
And then report, we have another meeting next week.
Yep.
They must want to do it sooner. We've scheduled another meeting, but I think next week is good.
Okay.
Get back with the references, have a discussion.
And these were the only two that had responded.
All right, so I'm going to wait specifically till 5:30, just because of the postings, so we can move on with the other agenda.
Do we have anything else?
Yep, we'll go down the list. Item number three, we'll move to plowing of private roads, 'tis the season. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the plowing of private roads at Brunel Ave, Draper, Joe Gardner, Lakeside Ave, Lane 21A, Mel Lane, Oak Ave, and Ward Street.
I will make that motion.
Second. The only discussion that I want to have is, I believe there were two from the email that I saw that needed work.
There were two that need work, that will be taken in letters, and if they do repair them, then we'll bring it back to the board.
Those are Chestnut, that's down by me, and I don't know where the other one is.
One of what the...
No, Chestnut, Chestnut and Forrest, those two.
Those are both down by me.
Forrest was habitual, where they haven't done anything in the past couple of years. But the beauty of this is, so for those that are listening, we actually have grindings from 148 that we've secured, so, you know, we can physically bring those out to there from Herb's recommendation, so that might help in those two roads.
La Tender, it's La Tender and...
But we're not voting on that tonight, so for those residents on those two roads, you'll reach out to either the selectmen's office or the highway department to...
I got a question.
Yeah.
How about Mashfield, is that on that list?
Mashfield, it's Mashfield, isn't it?
It's off of, it's off of, it's only one house down there, but it just got sold.
Well, no, it's not going to be on that list, because we have a policy that if they're not over two houses, we don't do it.
Oh, okay.
Can you please repeat the names of the streets that are approved for this kind of...
I will actually be better than that.
Okay, perfect, I don't have to mess with the selling thing here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, appointment. Another volunteer stepped forward for the conservation commission. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Dean to expire June 30th, 2019, as a member of the conservation commission.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
That has to go to Mikey's hand, too. Item number five, first and foremost, I'm going to entertain a motion to rescind the 10/20 vote to approve a special permit for North Bass Alliance, Felice Equable, for 8/7/16. They're going to change the date. Not the date, they're going to change the location. So entertain a motion to rescind...
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
And then I will entertain a motion to approve a special permit for the same entity, same date, but on a southbound.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, I will entertain a motion to sign the statewide contract for Rock Salt.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
What was the...
It's a state bid. Annual tonnage is 1,500. I don't see the price on here, but it is a state bid, so we have to go with the price that they have. I think this is just a formality to go with them. Look, Cindy requested that we sign it.
Yep.
I am not opposed to, I don't see a price, all I see is the, the tonnage, and it's a state bid, so... The motion?
Yep, I'll have it on the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven, we talked about this at the annual town meeting. Ms. Mahoney actually brought up the fact that we did discuss this, we did research it, but we didn't do anything about it because of the cost factor, and we didn't feel that was needed. Unfortunately, due to the laws, and you don't back up our emails, we have to have some type of backup, and this facility would do that. Months ago, it was about three or four months already, time does fly, we priced out Tantasc were backing up, and we priced out this company backing up, this company was cheaper. We came with a two, and we confirmed that it's a two-time, not one and one, the $5,000 and $1,750, we have to pay both at the same time?
$5,000 is to set it up, and the $1,750 is the year we could be, it's going to cost that much every year.
But we thought that they might waive the $1,750, but they said they won't, correct?
We have to pay it.
So entertain a motion to approve the 65, and this was approved at the town meeting, if you remember correctly.
I'll make the motion.
For the $6,750 to virtual town and school, so licensing agreement.
So, sorry, I was on the floor. Includes beyond the backup as well, or am I...
Backup, and didn't you say that's something to do with posting meetings too, Karen?
Well, it's, for everything that's on, they redo the whole website. There's going to be a lot more user...
Most of your communities, when I was getting ready to retire back then, a lot of the communities were already using this virtual town hall.
Well, that's why I say, it goes beyond the backup.
So the annual hosting support charge is a $1,750. It'll commence when the website goes live, and be due 30 days after receipt of invoice.
It's quite a bit, I think, when I remember backwards, quite a bit that goes along with it too, is virtual town hall.
And then the other question is, my town government stays or goes?
I think, if I remember correctly, I think he's going to try to keep it, I think he can keep it.
Okay.
Been a while since we discussed it. I mean, we do have to move up with the time, so...
Go for it.
Yeah.
So, phase one's website design, create site homepage, design and layout, create sub-page, design and layout, modify design. Phase two is the implementation. Phase three is full content development. Phase four is user training. Phase five is websites, website development, and that's the $5,000, and that's the initial setup. And then the $1,750 goes to the hosting support and application.
And then you said Mr. George is going to be the...
Yep, and yes.
Do you have further discussion?
No.
Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, signing of the council of aging grant document, to grant allocation...
The one they get every year. I also brought it up for you to sign.
I think she signed the wrong place and wanted it out.
Well, she did, but I avoided it, I didn't...
President's signature's appear, but we are authorized, council of aging attachment. Attachment B, formula grant application budget, hereby agrees to its submission, so it's an application for elder affairs, for grant application. So entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign a formal grant allocation statement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
There is actually no other correspondence. We do have one correspondence, notice of public hearing on cable television rates. Yes, folks, they're going to go up again. Pursuant to master and law, they have posted a scheduled date for Wednesday, August 24th, 10:00 a.m., at 1,000 Washington Street, hearing room 1E, in Boston, Mass. If you need more information on that, it is in this office, and we do have a report that hopefully we'll post that as well.
So the rates are going up again.
That's the only assumption, to hold a public hearing to raise rates, isn't it? Hopefully they'll see that the economy isn't that well. All right, any other correspondence are other? You good?
No, we're good.
All right, let's see, it being 5:30, can I make the assumption that you are, how you pronounce your last name?
Polakowski.
Okay, you can just come to the hot seat, warmed it up for you. Welcome in.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Complor, chairman of the board of selectmen. I don't know if you guys know the name.
Do you know the name, yes.
And then Mr. Snyder.
Aye, I miss you, Joe.
You did hear, privy to the list, we have five questions, Linda will be asking the questions.
Okay.
Don't feel nervous, not a big deal. If we want to ask any questions, we'll snowball off of it. Did you bring a list of references?
I did. I also brought a full resume, and I'm not sure if I...
Different from what you were sent.
If I can steal one of those, because I just saw the email. There's some of that?
That's the resume and the references are on the bottom.
Can we do that, or can you...
I have more paper than you.
Oh, you do?
Oh, good.
You have three?
I sure do.
Oh, terrific, okay.
Here's a plus.
Prepared.
Look at this beautiful...
I tried.
Can I get a paper clip, too, Karen, please? So before I turn it over to Linda, thank you very much for your interest in the town meeting, and the floor is Linda's.
Can we just, I just want to just go right over.
Sure.
Okay, so we want to get...
The floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so we'll start with our first question here. Why do you want to make the transition from the public sector position to municipal position?
That is my father's doing. My father's been very active in the community for as long as I can remember, and he's been pushing and pushing and pushing me for 20 years. Get involved, get involved, get involved, and I went my own way and had my kids, and my dad recently passed, so now it's time to listen to his words, for me, I think.
Do you understand the difficulties between, and differences between the public and...
Well, yes. I understand there are some things that I would need to learn, some municipal laws and things like that, but I'm a quick study. I don't think that it would be difficult. I also, I make a point to learn my job to the best of my ability. I mean, there's knowledge out there, it's just for me to find, so if I have a question, I don't have a problem finding the correct answer, and using resources that are available.
No, I think that's...
Okay. We have, it comes up by every year, these different schools that the assessors have to attend, and, you know, different classes to become certified, and eventually with this position, it takes three years for certification. So I will be going to attend to the school at UMass, in order to become a certified municipal accountant. The school will tell three days in March, and it takes three years for the certification, and the town pays, you know, pays for you to go to school, so you would be willing to go to these classes.
I am 100% for further education. I am one of those people who was not able to take advantage of college right out of high school. So I had my children, got divorced, and when I was 38, I decided it was time to go to college. And I have to be honest with you, I don't think I would have appreciated college at the age of 18 as much as I did at the age of 38, mostly because I would pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, I wanted to get the most for my money.
I was on the 20-year plan, too.
Okay, so, you know, I appreciated it, I loved that my experience out in the world was very helpful to the 20-somethings who were all a part of my classes, and, so yes, I would be willing to do any further education that's available.
I know occasionally there's other things that come up to, you know, different meetings and things, and it's always, you know, networking, and it's always good to get out there, do this network system.
Anything I can learn, anything I can learn, I want to soak it up like a sponge, because it'll all help me somewhere down the road.
Good, that's putting it forward. Okay, what are coming software are you proficient in?
I am 100% proficient in QuickBooks. There is also a program called Mitchell One, which is mostly automotive, so that wouldn't really pertain here. All the Microsoft products are, you know, I've been using since the beginning of time. And Peachtree I've looked at, not real familiar with, ADP Systems. ADP does a lot of programming for automotive and corporate accounting, so I have gone anywhere from a basic, just crunching numbers program, to manual accounting programs, where you have to literally tell the machine what you wanted to do. I started out in accounting with paper, just like, you know, before computers.
Because, we use here, we use this called VADA, and it's used by the treasurer, and it's also used by the tax collector. What we want to eventually do is get everybody, you know, networking together.
Okay.
And it's a municipal financial accounting system, and you're confident you can learn new financial software with supervision and time limit.
Absolutely.
The position requires a 20-hour work week, with occasional meetings, and on a weekly schedule, would you be able to work five hours in four days a week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at this point, I'm very flexible.
And the town, and the town hall staff frequently looks to the accountant for instruction, which requires people, good people skills. Do you have experience being a go-to person, or are you comfortable in this world?
I think, I think I have been the go-to person since the day I was born.
That's sad.
Well, let me rephrase that, since the day my sister was born, okay?
That's even sad, okay.
So I'm very used to not only work people, but people in the community coming to me. I volunteered a lot, so I'm okay taking the reins. I'm confident, I like to empower people, so I like to teach.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So if it's a matter of, somebody doesn't understand something that's going on, I would, I'd like to find a way to teach them the right way to do things, or their way of doing things, because everybody does things differently. And as far as, like, people from the town, they're everyday people, just like I am, so what's the big deal?
So, Karen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the only thing is, back to this is being part-time, and like, this is the idea of looking for full-time or anything like that. This fits with what you're looking for as far as the hours?
My long-term goal is to build up my private bookkeeping company. I am currently down to one forever client, I've been with him for eight years, but I've done, you know, here and there, I've taken on clients and lost clients, and then I took a full-time job, so that kind of went to the wayside, and I really want to focus on my personal and private bookkeeping, so a 20-hour week is a good base for me.
Good.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions, Karen?
No, and then also, the town accountant is required to follow different Mass general laws pertaining to the position, and we have them here. We have also the full, you know, if you, we can give it to you.
Oh, excellent, that's a job description?
The whole job description, plus...
You have two of them?
Yes, we have two in here. And also, there's a whole page that tells all the instructions of Mass general law, you know, that you're responsible for, so can you look that up?
You have a little tech, too, I guess, some extra ones.
Accounting laws are not just Massachusetts, the generally accepted accounting principles are, you know, pretty much international, so Massachusetts law is learning little tweaks, and here and there, it shouldn't be a problem. I'm very familiar with the state website.
It's definitely redundant, public for us, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do you have any questions for us, that we...
What is the pay range, you would ask?
I don't think we had that discussion in open meeting, it was set. I think that's something we'll have to have a discussion with at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
And I think, I think the only discussion we did have with the advisory committee would be based on experience.
Okay, yeah. Sounds fair.
So we'll see what the references come back at?
I do have, on my references, I have a personal, I have several business references, and also my long-term bookkeeping client.
So with your question to us, I guess my question to you is, where are you at with the pay scale, what are you comfortable with? Because some people will apply and be way too high, and...
I, I left the job making 22 in June. However, it was, it was a drive to work, so I have to take that into consideration. My responsibility level was not worth what they were paying me. So I'm willing to, you know, to fluctuate a little bit.
Coming to this interview today, what was the dollar you had here, my...
I could not take less than 15. I could not survive for less than that.
And I don't believe we're going to pay less than 15.
No, okay.
But you have someone come and say 40, or it's just on your list.
Well, you know, you can't look at it based on a part-time position like that, you can't really look at it on a manual salary, because it's not fair. I mean, a person who works a 40-hour work week, will generally work 40 to 50 hours, and that's, that's kind of what you're basing your salary on, you know? Versus where you're looking at more of a, you know, 15 to 25, from what I was reading on the, on the website, hour-a-week position, you have to have a lot of flexibility there. And I understand that municipalities can't afford to pay what the, what the private sectors pay, and...
I would disagree with that, some municipalities are a little higher than the private sector.
Well, depending on what it is.
Quite not my philosophy, but...
Yeah, oh, I forgot also to mention along with this position too, we're going to be hiring a clerk for 15 hours a week also.
Now, why would be the reason, just my own curiosity, what would be the reason for not rolling it together?
If we don't need it, we're good, but the desire is the turnover, if you were sick, you're on vacation, we still have somebody in the office that processes warrants and whatnot.
Okay, that was one thing, our other, our other, town accountant, Cheryl was one of the clerks, and, you know, goes in, you know, money in the budget.
But she was also giving, you know, getting 40 hours a week.
Yeah, she was getting 40 hours a week.
Lot of different factors.
Yeah.
So we restructured it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But, you know, they would help out, you know, doing a lot of different postings and things like that, you know, just be a little more of a backup person, and whoever, we have somebody now that was working for five hours a week, and I don't know if she's going to continue on with us or not, but, no, I don't know.
You have to convert it, like, before you...
Yeah, so, so probably whoever came in, you know, if they would have some training, and, you know, after you want to learn, then you could probably train them also.
Okay.
Have somebody available immediately, two weeks?
Yep, yep, whenever. And, you know, if in the beginning you need more time than, you know, 15, 20 hours a week, I'm totally open to it, till I learn the position in full.
Okay, and the one, right now, we have an interim town accountant, she just retired from the town, so she said she would stay on for a while in hospital.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, she said she would.
I'm excited, you know, I think I put in my, in my resume, I left Brimfield with these grand schemes of being, you know, the big accountant in the big city. And I did it. I did it, and I came home. I want to be in a small town, I want to make a difference.
That's cool, that's nice to hear.
Well, thank you very much.
Right there, we'll be in touch.
Literally probably right after our meal.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. It was nice to meet you.
Same here.
Nice to see you, Karen.
Nice to see you, Linda. Nice to meet you, thank you.
Is our, I think our other candidates in? I saw somebody up there.
Another copy, and then here, we give this to her. There's a copy for the, for...
Oh, Carrie got one, this is for Kathy.
For Kathy.
Oh, okay. Can we have, could I just have the QuickBooks, please? The eagle flowers and paper.
Hey Clarence, what's going to be the next step for the bridge repair stuff at town hall?
Good, good.
This is my hot feet, right?
This is your hot feet.
How to do it?
You can do it. No need to be nervous.
I'm not. Quite being interviewed by my neighbor, that's really...
That's good, so you shouldn't be nervous.
But now you're on the other side of the divide, so, you know, it's like there's another whole town.
You shouldn't be nervous. So Clarence, Steve, come to our Linda Lagan. We've strategized that Linda's going to ask all five pre-prepared questions. We might snowball off those questions at the end if you have any questions for us. And then we might even snowball into the last candidate with more questions off of your questions. So Laura's yours now.
Okay. First question is, why did you want to make the transition from the public sector to the municipal position?
Well, I was in nonprofit, and this was available. I mean, I was laid off in December, and it's very difficult. So I'm looking at things that are, I've applied for a couple of public jobs. We're on the interview with a couple of them. I did work for the state two different places. I worked for Worcester State University, I worked for UMass Medical School. So pretty familiar with state operations.
In what capacity?
At Worcester State College was council. That was way back in the day. And at UMass Medical School, I ran the walk to cure cancer. And I was a development officer there, grant writer, sense. And, you know, you get to be very familiar with the, especially when the governor lays down the budget. And you were like befurlored for three months, but you would still be working. But you get, it was really interesting. That was back in the 70s. So, you know, I am familiar with, I've worked for the town before in an consulting capacity. Familiar with a lot of the needs of the town, because my husband's on the constipation condition. He suggested that I apply, so. It was his idea. And, you know, I'm still looking in the nonprofit sector, not so much as the, in the nonprofit agencies, because those are really tough.
Yeah.
But, you know, so I'm open at this point.
Okay, are you, we have, there's a school for, you know, like accountants and things. And it's held at UMass. It's held every March, and it's a three-day course. And also, you're required within three years to get your certification. So are you willing to further your application and go to the school?
Sure. My last degree I got in 2007, so I can go back to school. Not afraid of it anymore.
Anymore.
Anymore, okay. Are you familiar with any accounting software or anything?
You know, I've used Excel, Access. I am not an accountant, I'm an administrator. So what I used to use was, was nonpro, no, not nonprofit, but fundraising software. Taught myself that, it was a Blackbaud product. And, because when I got the job at Overlook, there was no development department. There was no recording, there was nothing of coding, restricted gifts, or any of that. I was handed a manila folder full of copied checks and said, okay, these are, you know, there weren't acknowledging, there was no policies, no procedures. So I bought a cheap software with my company credit card, $300, and started putting that in. So what the CFO and I just, you know, kind of came up with was we got some policies and procedures for coding the charitable gifts. We had a form that would be filled out, would go with each check or each online donation, or regular credit card donation. Would be restricted or unrestricted to the different funds. For example, if you made a donation to the memory care unit in memory of someone, it would be coded in one way, and it would go to one side of the house. We had about seven different ones. And then prepare them, enter them on Excel file, and then enter them into the database. Monthly I would run reports and reconcile it with the business office. So they would put it into their software, I would put it into my software, and we'd run the reports and reconcile it. So I think in the other kind of account, I mean, there were the check numbers and all of that stuff was going into there, and it was making the ads, and making entry reports about what was restricted where. So I think probably there would be a pretty good translation into them.
Oh, right. Right here, we use what's called VADA. It's a municipal finance accounting system. It's already used by the treasurer and the collector. Eventually, what they want to do is, you know, they want to network them all together. Are you confident that you will be able to learn, say, a finance software with, you know, with some supervision?
I mean, I taught myself the last software. So I did tutorials and like went online and learned it. So I'm sure, I'm pretty computer savvy, I mean, so...
And there is training, there's training.
I mean, I didn't have any training, there was nobody to train me. So I was on, basically, online, trying to use videos.
We have right now an interim accountant. She got retired, and she is willing to stay on a while and train.
Oh, we have training in VADA as well, too?
Yeah, we get through VADA, we get to train through VADA. The position requires 20 hours a week. Would you be able to work, say, four days of five hours a week? And then there will be also occasionally some evening meetings and things like that. Okay. The town hall staff looks to an accountant for information all the time. They run out of town accountant office. And it requires good people skills. And I can see that you have some additional positions you had, but... Do you have the experience of being a go-to person, and are you comfortable in that role?
I ran my whole department, so anytime they had a question, they had to come to me. I didn't have any go-between. So, you know, like I said, I worked really closely with the business office. We did reconciliations monthly. Any grant accounting that was done, I worked with the higher-up manager, and, you know, the, all of that, did the budgets. So worked really closely with people and did that, so I think that would be...
Do any of you have some questions to ask me?
I have a wild question.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at your resume at Overlook. There was a gentleman by the name of Orville Harold, you may, because he...
I know his name.
All right. He was very generous and donated a lot of money to the trips next door for the edition. And I'm trying to find his daughters. And the last I knew, one of them worked at Overlook.
I don't even know who works there anymore, I couldn't even tell you.
Nope, not a problem.
Failed the interview.
Yeah.
Well, here's the thing, there have been so many people laid off and let go.
That's what I was told.
And outsourced. If she was a nurse, she'd probably still be there, but you'd have to know her last name.
Yeah, everybody's struggling for her last name at the moment, so.
And the historian of the place who knew everything was laid off the year before me. And he was the past grand master, Al Ames, he was the vice president of the foundation. He knew everybody, everything.
Al Ames.
Yeah. He's actually one of my references, so.
Oh, excellent. We don't have a sheet of references.
Oh, yeah, I have it right here. Yeah. Albert Timothy Ames, he is past grand master of Massachusetts. He was the vice president of the foundation. He was one of the senior management that was like all...
I'm looking for a trail to find him.
He, you know, he is very, very, you know, well-versed in who's what. Somebody else that I would, you know, if the woman is still working there and you know her last name...
No, that's the problem.
And you don't know her last name, then I would, I would say you could call somebody in HR, like you could call Trish Pratt in HR. You know, the thing is, I would, if I was still there, I would be able to probably find it really quickly for you.
Well, thank you for a couple of minutes.
You're welcome. But, yeah, there's been a lot of changeover in people. There were people that were there, you know, 40 years.
Sure.
That were outsourced.
That's right.
So it's just been, it's been a little crazy. So the only people I kept were the nurses and the seniors, fully, and some of the dining people.
Thank you, it was just like a while.
Two-fold question, just simply because we asked the other applicant availability, and then realistic pay scale, what's your looking for?
Well, I don't know what your pay scale, you know, is. I was interviewing for another part-time position, and the pay was 25. There was supervision there, it's $25 an hour. So I really don't know what your range is. I have no idea, and I know that the town is, you know, so, I mean, you could tell me what your range is.
We haven't had a discussion, it's going to be based on experience, but we want to be realistic with you.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm not, I'm certainly not looking to make the same money that I was making at Overlook. I will tell you that. It's more of a, like, and I am, I was upfront with Linda, I am also interviewing for two other part-time jobs on another level, so...
And we're not going to make a decision until next week? So I don't know if that affects...
Yeah, no, that's fine, I mean...
And then availability?
Availability would be soon.
Thank you. Also, I'm going to give you the job description also.
Great, thank you.
And plus, I was going to give you, the town accountant has to follow certain Mass General laws from the department of revenue, so I was going to give that to you also.
Okay.
Now, do you have any questions for us to provide?
Um, yes, I'm interested, this used to be a full-time position. And what was the decision, what was the other decision to cut down?
We had talked, I had talked to our auditor, who's been here for a lot. And he thought, with the town of our size of, you know, 3,400, he thought that 20 hours a week would be good. And we are also going to probably be hiring, we have money to hire a clerk.
A clerk, yeah.
So that's why he said 20 hours, and then 15. So that's why he said that.
What do you think the most important thing for this position to jump into when they get there? I think I know what I would think, but I'd like to know what your perspective is.
Can you rephrase the question?
What would be the priority for this position when they start? The priority tasks?
I think Joan's got us there.
Yeah, Joan, yeah.
What I would say is that the warrants on public business.
But I see, Sir, being the resident, she realizes things have been wrong, reconciliations is a huge issue. But we're in a heck of a lot better place than we were a couple of years ago. But I just, I think just knowing the position is the priority for me.
And just really keeping on top of things.
And yet, you can't, you can't let it fall through the cracks, right?
We have like, you know, we have like accounts, you know, accounts payable. And when the accountant gets them, the accountant, you know, does all of that. And then they, they're the ones that turn all the checks for that. And we have like every, one week we have like your accounts payable, and the next week it's payroll. And they...
But it's just the warrants right here.
The warrants right here.
Warrants and reconciliations, those are the two.
The treasurer, the treasurer does the payroll. And then both of you, you know, then she, then it's turned over to you, and you both have to equalize.
Well, that's a lot of what I did every month was with the, the business office. We reconciled everything. Sometimes we had to go date for it, but it was reconciled within the hour, so...
You know, so we also have the school, too. So there's a billing that comes down from the school, either regionalized.
And that's all reconciliation?
Yeah, that is true.
Big word.
Yeah, it's a big task, and it is, and you've got to do it.
That is what it is, right?
Yeah, that is what it is, I mean, you really need to do it, and...
Any other questions for us?
Thank you, answered most of them.
All right, and we will make our decision next week.
Okay.
Again, thank you very much for, I don't know if it was you or if Mike's desire...
Well, one actually did it.
For this position.
Hey.
But thank you both.
I'm finding, just being creative in my job search, so, yes, the commute's great.
There's no better place than Brookfield.
Yeah, because I can make it...
There's no place else in Brookfield, except Dollar General, so...
When the bridge is in, I can make it here in two minutes, so you can't make it here in three.
I know, I know. It took, it took about, it took less than 15.
We'll get it open soon.
And it's a good walk, I walk it, I walk it sometimes, too, Kathy, so you can walk it through.
It's actually really quiet, nobody's there, it's just great, so that's okay.
Post I've seen, they have parties.
It's nice and quiet.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen some pretty reckless driving in the past couple of years on the street.
Especially with the flood that turned, sure.
Yeah, no, we actually see people passing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, like in the other lane.
Yes.
Like drag racing down the street, that's pretty interesting.
All right, thank you for coming in. Thanks for coming.
Day first.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're in a hurry-up-and-wait situation.
I think we maybe want to meet after I get, do the references. Do we want to get together again and decide what we're going to do?
We can either do it in two days, or we can do it Tuesday.
I think we should get together maybe before here. I don't know how you feel, Karen.
Today's Tuesday, so Friday morning, 9:00 a.m.?
Yeah, that sounds good.
So can you post that, Karen?
Do you want to have him here?
In here.
And I will, and I'll get in touch with the references.
You definitely have, because that's huge.
Oh, sure, I know.
9:00 a.m. this Friday.
And I will come.
Any other discussions? As a team, we'll schmooze around.
I'll make that mention.
Okay. Any discussion? You're not off there.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.